Good evening. Today is Tuesday, March 10th, 2020. It is now 7:00 PM. I can now call this school committee meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Ms. Martina Shea?
Present.
Mr. Andrew March?
Present.
Ms. Jacqueline Ryan?
Present.
Mr. Spiro Thomo?
Present.
Mr. William Bishop?
Present.
Mr. Dr. Raymond Page?
Present.
We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We will now move on to Agenda Item Number Three, Public Input. Is there anybody here tonight who would like to address the Southbridge School Committee? Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Four, Discussion of Minutes. Just one correction from what I went through these was we forgot to include Mr. Spiro Thomo as present because he was. I had no other corrections. Is there any others? No? Okay. We'll now move on to Agenda Item Number Five, A, Receiver Superintendent's Announcements. Ms. Champagne?
Good evening. Can you hear me good? Okay. I'd like to start my presentation tonight with talking about the topic that I'm sure is on everybody's mind, the COVID-19 or the coronavirus, which is, hasn't been found in our town. But of course, you know that Governor Baker declared a state of emergency. Generally, that's for an increase in resources, but we don't have an immediate threat here in town. The Southridge Public Schools remains vigilant about monitoring the local risk and is prepared to act promptly to manage any risk that emerges related to COVID-19 in collaboration with the Board of Health, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the Center for Disease Control. It's important to note that many of the best methods to prevent the disease are the same as that you would use for a cold or the flu. That includes washing your hands with soap and water for at least 20 seconds, using hand sanitizer if you cannot wash your hands, avoiding touching your face, covering your coughs and sneezes with a tissue or your elbow, and staying away from people who are sick or staying home if you yourself are sick. Additionally, we have a specific page on the district website which has all of the information that we have about COVID-19 and will have any updates that we are able to provide. That's available on the homepage. It's also available under the "For Families" dropdown menu. So if we have any updates and for any updates that we've had previously, that information will all be available there. We'd also like to extend a word of congratulations to the students at Southridge High School who were recognized last night by the Town Council for their volunteer work at McMahon Field last year. They put in a lot of hard work into a community effort to improve and paint McMahon Field, and their hard work and willingness to volunteer reflect their pioneer pride and good character. So we're very proud of them. The Southridge High School Cheerleaders have been working hard and they've made it to the state, possibly nationals. The community is very proud of these young ladies and their accomplishments. The district-wide art show, the SWAG Showcase, will be held Wednesday, March 18th, starting at 5:00 PM. The annual tradition involves art in all forms from each of the schools in the district. It is held at Southbridge Middle High School, 132 Torrey Road, and the entire community is welcome to attend. There will be musical performances in the auditorium, a variety of art forms, and even a presentation of a one-act play that the Southridge High School Drama Department presented last fall. At Charlton Street School, the Young Men's Gentlemen's, the Young Gentlemen's Club, is hosting a family movie night at Charlton Street School on March 24th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Tickets are $3 each. The Young Gentlemen's Club is a leadership group that started at Charlton Street School and expanded this year to serve students in the middle school as well. The elementary schools celebrated Read Across America and Dr. Zeus's Birthday with various activities and spirit days focused on literacy and enjoyment of reading. Students at Southbridge High School are taking part in a program called One Goal that supports students in getting into post-secondary schools and completing post-secondary programs. The group at Southbridge High School is guided by teacher Sheila Jalbert. This program was recently featured in the local newspaper with a great photo of Ms. Jalbert and a student at an orientation event in Boston. At Charlton Street School, Worcester County District Attorney's Office recently offered an assembly about internet safety and cyberbullying. Students benefited from age-appropriate discussion of the roles of bully, victim, and witness, and what they should do if they are in any of these roles. At the high school, Sandy Hook Promise provided a presentation to students called "Start With Hello", which emphasized reaching out to peers who may be struggling and creating a positive environment. Students were offered ways to break the ice or other tools to start conversations with their peers and get to know those around them. As a result, after the presentation, students placed Post-it notes on their peers' lockers with encouraging and friendly notes. We were, the lady who made the presentation commented later after the presentation that we were the best behaved student audience that she had presented to so far. So we're very proud of our kids. The National Guard has taught a hands-on course in robotics at Southbridge High School, and they'll be returning in a few weeks to teach another seminar on coding, computer coding. Spring sports will begin soon, and tryouts and registration will be coming up soon in the next week or so. Sports offered will include baseball, softball, outdoor track, tennis, and volleyball. I'm working closely with the athletic director to have our schedules posted on the website and information on the upcoming athletic season. Also related to students, our student athletes, I'd like to conclude by sharing a message from a parent of a student athlete in a neighboring town which had competed against Southbridge. The parent contacted us and said the following. "I wanted to take this opportunity to share how impressed I was with your girls' basketball players, varsity basketball players, coaches, and parents at last Friday's game. They never gave up, no matter what the score was. They were positive team players and leaders for everyone to model. They should be acknowledged for acting as what I think as exceptional athletes, coaches, and community members." So that was a very nice reflection on our students. Do you have any questions?
I do, actually. To your first point about the COVID-19, is the receiver actively preparing contingency plans in case things do happen? It's nice that we're, you know, doing the basics, but a lot of this is due to the fact that we were, the federal and state governments were inept in actually coming up with contingency plans for when it did come. So is Dr. Villar working with, say, the Board of Health and other health officials to come up with contingency plans for the schools?
Yes, we've reached out to the Board of Health locally, and we get communication and communicate directly with the Mass Department of Public Health. The CDC coordinates with them, so information is shared and plans are made if and when something were to occur.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I got a question in regards to that, and this is a big if. To implement that kind of a plan, a survey needs to be taken. Maybe it already has in terms of how many students actually have computers at home? Because without computers, you can't do the online teaching. So do you know if anything, any type of plan or survey has been done? Or do you know how many, what the percent?
Well, I'm not sure exactly how many students, you know, have access, online access at home. I'm not sure if we have that data specifically.
Right.
It would change a lot, but regardless, we would find a way to reach every student as needed.
And I was intrigued by the, was it a one-day training program in robotics?
The National Guard visited Southbridge High School over a period of two weeks to provide a robotics, hand-on robotics course.
But it was for one day?
It was over the course of two weeks, and I believe the schedule was split between various classes. So different classes would go.
I don't know how the rest of the committee would feel, but I would like to see something like that be implemented in the curriculum, robotics with something else, because I think that's the future. Any type of trade, that type of technology, and I think the students would really find that very interesting.
The hands-on learning is very valuable.
It could start off as an elective, not a mandatory course. Just a thought.
As is the coding that they'll be teaching as well.
I have to say, actually, Mr. Thomo, I agree with you. We're seeing a lot of public schools just actually take in a lot of vocational-type programs and offering them within their curriculum because they know how valuable they are to getting students to meet the job markets within their localities. So that's something I would like.
Because our generation is starting to retire in terms of, in terms of trade. Not so much you, but most of us here. And that's where the shortage is going to be in some kind of a trade. So if you can implement that in public education where they can have a basics, where they may want to pursue that in the future. Just a thought.
I agree, Mr. Thomo. Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Champagne.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to Chairperson's Announcements. I only have a brief one. Me and Ms. Shea did meet with the receiver to have a discussion. He gave us a presentation. We talked about things like student disciplinary rates. We did see that overall, while there was one month that was pretty high up, there is, as they've been instituting a lot of these restorative justice and these PBIS techniques, there has been some lowering. But there was nothing really too much. The council got the presentation me and Ms. Shea got. The Rotary Club got the same presentation, so the information's out there. I believe it's on the public website, so please go look at it and see for yourself. We'll now move on to Members' Forum. I believe I started this side, so I'm going to start over here. Mr. Page?
All set. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bishop?
All set.
Mr. Thomo?
All set.
Mr. March?
Thank you. So I wanted to read from the Southbridge Public Schools Facebook page. It was something that happened at the beginning of the month. "This week, Southbridge High School students taking AP Biology are conducting a DNA phosphorescence lab with the support of Leslie Prudhomme from Mass Insight. Students are testing for genetic traits related to taste for this enriching lab. Thank you to Mass Insight for visiting Southbridge High," and I'd like to second that thank you. That is a, I actually did a lab similar to that when I was in high school 12 years ago, 14 years ago. And it was, it was very immersive, and it was that hands-on learning that member Thomo highlighted on. And I think that as we move into the 21st century, that we are going to be seeing a lot more intensive STEM education and the progress that we have to make to keep up with the rapidly changing economy in order to get our students ready to become adults and go into the workforce in whatever trade or degree field they choose to do. Offering things like this definitely can lend students to decide where they want to go. It can also inspire a love of learning, especially with students that don't particularly like to learn. This is a hands-on, it was a hands-on activity. There are pictures available on the Southbridge Public Schools Facebook page that you can look at. And things don't look easy, so I don't think I could do this now, 14 years later. I wanted to also highlight that a couple of weeks ago, or February, we had the, or a week ago, we had the presidential primary, and I was looking online at the results, and there were approximately 2,600 voter, registered voters in Southbridge that voted in the presidential primary. In the June 2019 local election, only 1,100 people voted. Now, any election is important, but our local elections immediately impact your daily life. These are the elections that you really want to turn out for. These are the representatives you elect for our locale. You will see at the Big Bunny. You will see at Big Y. You may see them in a sporting event. These elections are very important. Southbridge has had a bad habit of having low local turnout for their local election. We have three council seats up. We have four school committee seats up and a myriad of other seats as well on other boards. This is very important. This is pushing Southbridge forward either in education or in general town government. These are things that you need to vote for and pay attention to. It's our right to vote. It's our civic duty to vote, and I would encourage that as this election cycle continues and we start seeing candidates come out once nominations are made in April, that you pay close attention and that you vote. It's the second Tuesday in June. Please pay attention to the local politics. If you would like, pull nomination papers here in Town Hall with the Town Clerk for whatever board piques your interest, and volunteer and help give back to the community. Everyone on this board and everyone that sits on the Town Council has a dedication and a desire to see Southbridge improve in one manner or another. Many of them have served in government longer than I've been in the state of Massachusetts. I've only been up here for 11 years, and I know that there are members that have served in our local government longer than that. They are dedicated. These people on this day and whatever facet want to give back, and I would love to see more people step up and do the same thing. We had five high school students last night that took time out of their summer to help beautify the town. They didn't have to, and the fact that they were self-motivated to give back to the community, I think the rest of us as adults need to learn from that example, and I would love to see more people either stepping up and becoming in town government or volunteering in whatever facet you can. There's a multitude of different charities and organizations throughout town. This is our town, and we should be proud of it, and we should try to give back as much as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. March. Ms. Shea?
Good evening. I went to the Town Council meeting last night, and I heard Dr. Villar tell us about how wonderful our school district is doing, and I have no doubts that it is actually improving. But he did say one thing that kind of knocked me back. He said he's not coming to the meetings because the meetings are all about him, and that is not useful. And I had to agree with him. So I looked up what school committees used to do when we actually had power. It's on the DOE website, so I'm not pulling this from the air. Now, it starts off that the superintendent is the educational leader for the school system and provides administrative leadership for all school staff and operations matters. The day-to-day operation of the school system is the responsibility of the superintendent, in our case, /receiver, together with school principals and other administrative staff members. That's under Ed reform, so there is no question the superintendent/receiver is the day-to-day operator for the schools. But when we were taken over, the state took our power away, and I looked to see what our powers used to be. "The school committee establishes educational goals for the district." We don't know what the goals for the district are. "The school committee establishes educational policies for the school and the district and are consistent with the requirements of the law of the statewide goals and standards established by the Department of Ed, General Law 71, Section 37." We have a policy book that, as far as I can see, has not been updated since 2007. We don't know if those policies are being followed. We don't know if they've been changed. "The school committee reviews and approves budgets for the public education." The school committee used to spend a great number of hours examining the budget. I listened to Town Council meetings, and they'd say, "We're transferring this sum of money from this account to this account. We're going to add this money to this account. We're taking this money from this account." That's after the budget has already been set. We used to have that power. We don't. We have no idea where the money's going or what's being done with it. When Chairman Ryan and I went, we asked the receiver that question, and he assured us that the business manager says that if we don't spend any more money, everything will be fine by the end of the year. "The school committee is the hiring authority." Now, again, this was before we lost our powers. They are the hiring authority for the superintendent, the assistant superintendents, the school business manager, the administrator of special ed, the legal counsel, and attendance officers. "The Department of Secondary, Elementary and Secondary Education recommends the school committee evaluate the performance of the superintendent as chief executive officer. We neither hire nor do we review." "The school committee's status as employer for collective bargaining proposes remain unaltered under the new Ed reform law." It was new at the time this was written. "We used to spend hours and hours of collective bargaining, both with administrators, teachers, and other staff members. We don't know what the contracts are. We don't know what the payments are." "Under state law, the school committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, establishes performance standards for teachers and other employees in the district. These performance standards must be consistent with the supplemental and supplemental to the regulations on evaluation and principles of effective teaching adopted by the Board of Ed. We know nothing about teacher evaluation." "The school committee adopts the professional development plan for all principals, teachers, and other professional staff employed by the district. We do know when they have professional development. We do not know what the professional development is." "The school board used to be the legal agent for the state and was therefore required to maintain the state and federal regulations. At the same time, the board must be responsible to the community it serves, and that's what we're trying to do. The only person who has these powers is Dr. Villar, so he is the one that we ask." "I've watched the Town Council. When they ask the town manager for something, he gets it for them. He tells them about it. He plans it out. If he doesn't have it for the meeting they wanted it at, they explain to him quite firmly that they want it at the next meeting. All we are trying to do is our responsibility as being responsible to the community we serve. I ask, and I will ask, and ask, and ask that we, if we cannot take part in these particular things, we are informed of the changes, the movements, and the uses of all of the monies and teachers and staff and all of the other things that used to be the responsibility of the school committee. And I ask because someday, although Dr. Villar again says it's going to be five to seven years before we receive our school back and before there's any training for the school committee to take back these responsibilities, apparently the state has no plan for that. I will, I will keep asking whether I'm on the board or sitting out there. I will ask at every school committee meeting, what is the budget? What is the curriculum? What are we doing?" Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. Any other members? Mr. March?
Thank you. I actually appreciate the fact that you were able to read that and the public was able to hear that. So I'm actually going to ask a general question to you, Ms. Chair. What are the goals of the Southbridge School Committee?
The goal of the Southbridge School Committee under receivership is to act as a conduit between the receiver and the public. At least, that's been explained to me.
But that's, but this body still has the ability to determine, not necessarily the goals that it immediately impacts as far as the curriculum, budget, or policy, but what goals, like for our members to be cohesive, what goals should we see as the district progresses? What are our goals to see so that we can at least have some guideline to hold accountability to the receiver, or at least give a line of questioning as to what? What do we want to see as far as anything? Because acting as a conduit, this is how it's been, and acting as a conduit had the receiver no longer attend these meetings. So my, my goal, I set my personal goals, and I try to do those, but I'm only an individual. This is a collective body. So what are our goals? What would we like to see as a collective body?
If you want, and if other members want, we can have that discussion at our next meeting, and we can set up clear goals for what we want the district to be. Since the receiver doesn't come, I think that's a much more useful time for this body.
I mean, we've, for months, we've been saying, "Working together in teamwork and working together in teamwork." And I think now is, well, I mean, it was a while ago, but if we can have substantive discussion amongst ourselves to figure out what goals we want to see as far as performance or budget or anything like that, we should set them together. That's, regardless of whether or not we have any authority, it's still our job. So, thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'm going to take a little bit more of a, possibly a cynical view of that. I mean, the bottom line is receivership disassembles a school committee. It makes it irrelevant and completely mute. I'm not even really sure why there is a school committee under receivership. And maybe that's a question we should ask the state to explain. Why do they want there to be a school committee if it has no power? If it has no ability to influence, it has no ability to judge, has no ability to do anything, then it's literally a waste of time. Let the receivership end. Let the superintendent or the receiver get things back on track, and then if you want to have a school committee again, then we can have one. I mean, that's one of the reasons why I don't bother to come to these meetings. Receiver's not coming, I'm not coming, and, you know, it doesn't matter what we say or we suggest or whatever, and there's no data or no presentation of anything that's going on. Particularly, Ms. Shea raised the issue of policy. That's a really big one in my mind. And to say the policy wasn't addressed since 2007? No. When I started on the school committee six years ago, or whenever it was, we addressed policy at subcommittee. I was the chair of the policy subcommittee. And we met quite often and reviewed every single policy on a routine basis and made recommendations to the superintendent on changes. All right? But there's no point in wasting our time doing that if it's all going to be just, you know, you don't have a say. And I think it's pretty clear. I mean, I'm not upset. I mean, it may sound like I'm upset, but I'm just speaking the truth. It is what it is. Let's accept it. Let's not get upset about it. Let's not worry about it. You know, this, this body is a, it's nothing. Right? I mean, the state set the law. The way the law works, this body is useless. You know? Anyway, that's.
Mr. Thomo?
Do you have, to Andrew's question, why are we here? Do you know, is there a reason?
Well, I mean, the reason, the reason is, I mean,
Town law?
No, it's, it's encumbered in the state law. They didn't get rid of the school committee for the purpose of, it was supposed to, any other receivership that I've seen in the state has had the receiver present at school committee meetings, working with the committee, getting community input, getting committee input.
Answering questions by the committee?
Answering questions. I have to say, I've seen, you know, I've had discussions with other school committee members from under receivership, and this is a very unique situation. I have to be quite honest. This is a very unique situation with the receiver just doesn't show up to committee meetings. And there's been districts who have, I mean, Holy Oaks is just in as bad a shape right now as Southbridge is. And again, the receiver does a much better job at working with the committee, and the committee and the community actually appreciate the receiver because he's forthright, he's honest, he comes to meetings, he answers everything truthfully, he doesn't play around the bush. And again, this is a very unique situation, which we don't have the receiver actually fulfilling that part because he doesn't feel the need to. So this is a unique situation.
I personally met with the receiver on a number of occasions, and he's always been very open with me and forthcoming. He never refused a meeting that I requested. I just wish he was here because I would have liked to have expounded more on, when we were talking about that course in robotics, about how to get that as an elective, maybe starting junior year, Robotics 1, Robotics 2, as electors. And I guarantee it'd be such a pop- be such a popular course. But it, it, it's hard to, to do it. I can do it one-on-one with him, but I need more input from the, the committee on that recommendation or that thought.
Ms. Chair, can I just, one final, one final point. I mean, don't get me wrong, I am not disparaging, disparaging in all the efforts of the receiver, and I'm not disparaging him for not being here. Okay? He may be, for all we know, you know, mining through data and doing things that better suit his time doing than being here and acting as a conduit. My frustration, to an extent, is the, the lack of transparency in terms of the kinds of things that the school committee normally would oversee being disclosed to the community. That's, that's my biggest frustration. Normally, you know, the whole history of, I mean, I went to school committee meetings way before I even became a member, the whole history of, and there was a, a very serious superintendent's report that included a lot of really detailed budgetary staffing and all sorts of informations that were communicated to us as, because it was part of our responsibility to oversee that, but it was really a conduit to communicate to the, to the, to the citizens of Southbridge to know what is going on, on a detailed and a revolving basis. We have none of that now. Part of the argument is, we don't deserve to know it. The state laws are structured so that we don't have any influence over it, and the community doesn't have a right to know. And that's the bottom line. That's the way the state has structured receivership in terms of the law. Personally, I think it's categorically a wrong way to go about things, basically taking unilateral power away from the citizens of a town in terms of how to go about educating its students, and I think that's a categorically wrong way to go about it. Basically, the state's saying they know better. Look at the data in the town report, we're not getting any better after how many years of receivership.
Mr. Bishop?
I'd like to echo Dr. Page's last comment. Last evening, a, a lot of paper was wasted on the Southbridge Public Schools' latest update. We were not afforded this, okay, I happened to get this from somebody who was at that meeting last evening. And Dr. Page has a very valid point, the state has taken over three school districts and has done a horrific job in all of them. The, the data's here, I mean, I wouldn't be coming to these meetings if this was my work product either. I'd be hunkered down under my desk in my office, I really would. Okay? I mean, until, and I got a chuckle reading the paper the other day, the Boston Globe, they talked about the state wants to take over some of the Boston Public Schools. Seriously? If they, come over here and look at this situation. I mean, it, it, it's a law that I understand, that I think the legislature would put in place with the best thought and hopes in mind, but it's not working. It's an absolute disaster. We're down to 1,900 students here. Kids can't leave fast enough. We're paying a receiver $209,000, and he won't come to a meeting? We, this is our fourth receiver in four years, and we worked with the other three receiv- well, the first receiver was the commissioner at the time for four or five months, he never came out here. But number two and three, especially the third one, Dr. Johnston, he understood that the need was going to be there for some, at some point, to turn the district back over to the taxpayers and the citizens of this community. And he worked very hard at maintaining good lines of communication and, and getting the job done. He left his arrogance at home, I think. Okay? If, if, you know, for $209,000, if you can't come over and take some heat, man, what does that say about you as a person?
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Mr. Murch?
So, real quick, how quickly this discussion about what we should do as a collective body turned into criticizing the receiver. Now, I look at this report, and my predominant thing, and what, what really has irked me in Southbridge Public Schools for a long time, is the fact that our students aren't leaving elementary school with the necessary foundation of reading and math. That has been...
Without question.
Okay. So when you say this is a quote "waste of paper," how is having students, almost 50% of our students, within three months in kindergarten, having the necessary word fluency to meet that, to meet their goals? How is testing grade one, having over seven, almost 80% of our students meeting their goals by January of 2020? How, in, in grade two, we also have vast improvement. How is that not improving? Now, I understand in the secondary schools, and I've been hard on the receiver for this too, that we're not making the progress that needs to be made, and these kids are fixing to be out into the workforce. So there needs to be double time on, on working on that, and he's aware of that, and he knows my opinion, it's not going to change until they see results. If we, we were, Southbridge Public Schools had a problem with giving kids a good educational foundation in the elementary schools. That was an issue. That is the biggest issue, because I don't care what courses you offer in middle school and high school, how many masters or doctorates we have in the middle school and high school, whatever curricula field they chose, if they don't have, if these kids did not have a good educational foundation, they're not going to succeed. Period. Point-blank end of discussion. I don't, I want to see 90 to 100%, obviously. I mean, I think every, every single one of us in this town wants to see 100% of our students making a goal. That's a pipe dream. There are going to be students that struggle, especially some harder than others, depending on home situation, which is not privy to our jurisdiction, even if we had authority. So our, the school district's job, which I still include this as our school district, because we are the school committee for this district still, regardless of our authority, is still to ensure that our children are getting a good education at all levels. Now, the curriculum in the, the middle and high school, from talking with, the nearest parent I have lives across the street from me, so I communicate with her, her daughter's in high school, she's in advanced placement courses, and, and she's doing rather well. So that's, that's a testament to the fact that we have students that achieve and try to strive harder to challenge themselves. So there are those students that are still in this district that are like, okay, AP is easy, I need to do something harder. That's good. We have those students in this district, they exist. We have performing students. But the fact that the results and the data is here, and I'm sorry, I think the MCAS is a complete joke, as far as to, to try to see how well your school district is performing. You give me the results in the middle of the next school year, for me to try to go, oh, okay, we're having problems with reading, let's focus on that, while we're already in the next school year. It, personally speaking, the MCAS needs to be done away with. It is a terrible data model to realistically show the progress of students or to attack the problems when we're not making progress. The fact that I see data tables like this, working on iReady diagnostic of whether or not they have phononic, excuse me, phononic and, and word and letter recognition, the fact that we have students in kindergarten looking at what they call nonsense words, are these words real words, which ones are real words, which ones are not? That's, that's part of these assessments. My son went through them, and I made sure that I was allowed to attend one of these assessments because I wanted to see what happened. And this was before my, before I was in capacity as a school, as a school committee member. This is when I was just a parent, and I was an annoying one at that, because I was severely involved. I see this data and I see progress. I don't see perfection, and I don't see a way out immediately. I'll agree, we're going to be here for a while with this. But you proved the point by throwing up that we have a $209,000 receiver that's not here. We turned a discussion that we could have legitimately debated and had amongst ourselves and found a way to drop him in. He's not here, I don't want to talk about him. I don't. It doesn't, it's not our job to get him here. It's his job to show up. He hasn't. I can't change his mind. I've tried. So let's change ourselves, because I'd rather be the thing he's missing out on than the thing he's trying to avoid. And it's clear that he's trying to avoid this body. So let's skip discussing him at all. Let's focus on us and what we see, and let's not have a negative look at this. This is, this is progress. It's not great progress, it's not where we need to be. I'm not going to deny that in 50 pages, this does not say that we are on our way out, the receiver's on his way out the door. It's not. This shows me that we realistically, I think he's wrong, I think we have six to eight years left from seeing this data, because we need these kids that are improving and meeting these goals to get into the middle and high school and take that MCAS. Because the state still does not really know how to educate in the 21st century and uses an outdated 30-year-old testing model as to whether or not our students are performing well. And that's what we have to go off of, or that's what we were going off of for years. We need to change the tone. He's reading different data points to figure out whether or not we're changing the tone. This in and of itself, just the fact that we have data like this, is an improvement, because I don't know, I didn't, I've tried to watch as much school committee meetings as I can. I didn't see a lot of data like this in previous. I may be wrong, because I didn't watch every school committee meeting. I tried to watch as many as were available on SCTV's YouTube. So I don't, and I didn't see a lot of data like this. The fact that we're even measuring this data is phenomenal, and it's a way for us to change the, for him, to change the curriculum, to attack the actual issues and not try to blanket code education.
I have, I have to interrupt on that point, that we used to get a packet of information on the school committee that was this thick every single meeting. Now we get a piece of paper that's exactly the same as a piece of paper. We used to, we had school, subcommittee meetings where we went over budget, where we went over curriculum, where we talked about reading levels. We did all of that. We, we lived here.
My, my main point was not that there wasn't any data given. It's specific data points that attack certain issues. Now, we didn't get put into receivership because of the budget. We got put into receivership because of school performance and, and curriculum. So I think that, I would love, if you could, when you meet with the receiver to make the agenda, allow us to have a, an agenda item that we can have open discourse about setting goals and expectations for the district. That is our first step. We, we, we can't play politics anymore. We can't play hate the bad guy. We need to try to act, the deliberate, be the deliberative body that we're supposed to be. We might not be able to effect change, but we can still debate and deliberate on what needs to be done. That's put into the public record, whether the receiver acts on it or not, just reflects on him. So we need to still do our job, and, and, and that's why I want to have debates like this. This has been good, this has been healthy, and, and it may seem a little animus, but this has been lacking from this body. And, and, and I'm sorry to be the one to stir the pot, but I'm just glad that it happened.
Mr. Chair? Mr., Mr. Page. Dr. Page, excuse me.
In order to have goals, in order to have a debate, you have to have information. We don't have information. And I'm not faulting the receiver for that. I mean, the, the point, I'm, I'm going to reiterate the point that I made earlier. This body is deliberately made moot by the state. The way they structured receivership laws and everything basically makes this a moot point. The fact that, and, and when the original receiver came in, basically said, I want to still have a functioning school committee, because they weren't planning on being here for very long, they thought we were going to be able to turn things around faster, that person actually wanted to hear from us and hear our ideas and so forth, and actually, but you know, it was a set of circumstances that, you know, ended that one very early and unproductively, unfortunately, but that was the, that was that person's intention. To want, I want to leave with a functioning knowledgeable school committee body. None of that's ever happened, and we're how many years later now? This is our...
Going at 12. We, we started our fifth year.
Our fifth year. So, but that, I'm going to end it for now, because, you know, to me, this is, this has gone on too long, in my opinion.
Well, I, I, I just want to apply to one of the previous speakers. We talked about how, how well the students are doing on the AP tests, and that may be, that may be a narrative and a belief, but the test, the proof is in the puddings. When, when we give those AP tests, the scores come back, one through five, and you need a three, four, or five to pass that test. And I could tell you, as a high school principal for a long time, they're not easy tests, and I was never happy with the results in my last school, or my, or even when I was at Southbridge High. Okay? They're hard tests, I'd like to see our students do better. I don't have the data on how many of our students actually pass those tests. And as far as the MCAS, you know, MCAS is MCAS. Again, state mandated. But that was the barometer and the, and the rationale for, the, the main impetus for them taking over our district. Okay? And they, they haven't done any better with those scores. They have not done any better with the scores. And Dr. Page talked about information. I, I, I got this report from a member of the town council, it was not Mr. Lazo. I got this from another member. Why wasn't the school committee afforded a copy of this? Were we concerned about maybe cutting down another half a tree? I mean, this is a 40 or 50-page report that whomever is in charge of notifying school committee on, on issues, didn't have the wherewithal or the, or the, well, perhaps just indifference about supplying this data to the school committee.
I believe the receiver may have mentioned last night, this is essentially, in essence, going to be our quarterly report with, with more additions and information as well. He made that point last night.
If we missed the meeting, which I didn't catch all of it, I didn't hear that. And certainly, the, the young lady who comes forth with information could have brought that forward to us this evening, that this report was available for members who did not get a copy. Okay? And as far as the report itself, I, as I, as I went through it, we had a whole section on climate and culture and how many referrals and detentions and deficiencies and conduct unbecoming, as we might say. But it stopped at the middle school level. I can't find any data in here pertaining to the nine through 12 students. So maybe, maybe, maybe I got a, a bad copy, I don't know. But I can't find any information, it ends at the middle school. I'm just saying. Okay? I'm not here to kill anybody. Okay? I committed my career to this district and post-career. I could be sitting at my condo in Florida right now, but I come back for the meetings when I'm there, because that's what I believe. Okay? I'm not a drive-by ladder climber. Okay? I've been here a long time, and I am going to continue to be here. They're not going to chase me out, because I actually live in this community and spend a lot of money in this community and care about this community. I don't mean to get hostile, but if you think I'm here to assail one individual, trust me, receiver number two, why, we won't even go back, we won't even go back in history. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Shea?
As I started this discussion, it got deeper than I thought it would, the receiver said he doesn't come to the meetings because it ends up all being about him, and that's exactly right. When we have a question, if we don't get the answer right away, as the town council says to the town manager, we wanted that information today, it better be at the next meeting, and he gets it for them by the next meeting. We end up just yelling at each other, and that's, that's why we're, we're digging ourselves into this thing. We need to be able to say, on page 12, what does this mean? If we don't, if we don't have him here, we just yell at each other. I'm sorry, Mr. Murch, but I want to work with him, but if he's not here, it's not going to happen. I know you said that you want him here, I'm not, I'm not saying that, and I'm not saying that he's not honest. We've all said that when we go to see him individually, he's very good, he's very honest, he's very forthcoming. It's just that when we ask him here, I don't know whether he feels he's on the spot or what it is, but we, we need, the town, no, not we, the town of Southbridge, the citizens, the taxpayers, need information. That's the only way they can vote, that's the only way they can pay taxes, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. Any other comments? Dr. Page?
Taxation without representation, and I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? The meeting is now adjourned.